Welcome to the April 15th Planning Commission meeting. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Johnson is absent. And would you all like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, per the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated, or if approved by the chair. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Zoom participation during this general public comment period will not be accepted. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days. April?
At this time, we have six speaker cards. We're going to start with Danny Dorman.
Good evening, and it looks like I'm going to freestyle here, but before I forget, first and foremost, Commissioner Roberts, you asked a question at the last meeting of staff. I certainly hope you get an answer, as in a name, or the Commission itself. But you asked for a name. I hope you get a name. Also, I want to thank Contacosta Fire and Supervisor Burgess for calling the dogs off me. Normally, it doesn't bother me. I grew up in a project, so sticks and stones and all that. And I'm not saying that the Supervisor or CCC Fire sicked anyone on me, but their, let's call it grooming of the sycophants, you know, pushed a little bit too far. I haven't gotten any heat since, so if there are any thank yous, thank you. All right, how do you take an idea, a goal, or an initiative, and make it so repulsive and divisive that the idea of it is tarnished beyond imagination? You take one idea, mix in hidden agendas, and set the boil. And don't worry about the stench. The greater the stink, the better the result. For example, the firehouse. An idea to have a new firehouse built here in Brentwood, no one disagrees with that. We need it. No one can dispute that. Unfortunately, you have people who reside and deal in backroom office elite shenanigans. They don't just want a firehouse. They want a firehouse where they can gain political points. Look what we built down here. It's the only thing that makes sense. And as an aside, I never really noticed, but yesterday I drove down Sand Creek. That lot is huge. It is huge. I don't even know why. Well, I know why. The county's cheap. But if they're talking about in the interest of us, that lot can fit, I want to say, the entire property that the veterans own and a couple of three houses. It's huge. But let me go back to my rant. So, the divisive rhetoric, specifically the, oh, the vets are against our first responders. That, that came from you sycophants. Didn't come from the vets. It came from you after, and I'm looking right at them. I apologize for not looking at you. But that came after all the other tricks that you tried failed. Right now, I assume you guys are still waiting for that information, the dog ate my homework information that Contacosta Fire should have brought. I am glad you folks looked out for the city and are looking out for the city. We need to hold any developer's feet to the fire, whether it's Sino, whether it's Shea, whether it's the county. And if that cramped firehouse does not make any sense, again, I know some of this is outside your purview, but design is well within your wheelhouse. And if this design does not work for our city, please, please, please keep that line in the sand. Thank you.
Paul Ratliff.
Good evening, Commission, Staff. Tonight, I just wanted to...
Excuse me, sir. Could you raise that mic up a little bit? Thank you.
I just wanted to touch bases a little bit again on the property that's been developed for a fire station on Sand Creek. I want everybody to keep in mind that in 2005, when it was first decided by the old fire department that it was inadequate, Garen Ranch had not fully been developed. They can now head east and make a left on Garen Ranch. It's absolutely set up for it. Since that time also, the school size here at Liberty has grown exponentially. So we have a lot more crowds here. So in the past meetings where we've had the architect and the designer here for the fire station a couple of meetings ago, talking about how everything would work smooth, and that wasn't adequate, all their designs and all of their program simulations do not include vehicles parked in front, vehicles across the street at the bank, at the childcare. They do not touch upon 2,000 students. I still have many friends that work for the school district, and they're telling me that the school district is going to get a lot larger over the next few years, which means there's going to be a lot more students, a lot more crowds, a lot more traffic. When you actually take the time to drive down Sand Creek, look at where the proposed fire station lot was developed, and then drive down to Garen, you make a right. You have a lot better access. You do not lose a lot of time getting into downtown. It's clear shot down. What was decided that was no longer a good idea in 2005 no longer holds any relevance today because the city itself has grown and expanded, and that needs to be taken into account. Anyway, that's all I had tonight. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Roger Cockfedge.
Good evening, excellent members of the Planning Commission, staff, and especially April. Once again, thank you for putting up with me. You're amazing. I know I'm not supposed to address the staff directly, but I have to do that. Thank you so much, Anita, and everybody there on the board. I'm just going to touch on a couple of subjects real quick, and I really want to thank Miguel, by the way. Again, I know I'm not supposed to address the staff, but Miguel, you've been really super. I'm not allowed to authorize a raise, but if I could, I would. I think you all deserve a raise and a 60-day paid vacation to the Bahamas. So I've been doing some research, and I've come to discover that the fire department is not planning to provide the reports requested. And I'd be really fascinated to find out why, because this is not a like-for-like fill-in. This is a project that's going to be taking up twice the size. And if the fire department feels that they do not have to provide the reports requested, that means any future developer can do the same thing. And that is a bad legal precedent. Also, it has come to my attention that the size of Liberty is going to be expanding. And we have a speaker who will follow me, who will be able to expand on that better than I can. So that will also have to be accounted into the CEQA report. And if the fire department does not include that in the CEQA report, then it will be an invalid report. Also, if the fire department does not include the American with Disabilities Act ramifications of the size of the fire department and the decibel levels going on to the veterans at the Veteran Hall, that will also be an invalid CEQA report. And also to be in consideration is in fact that these are two separate lots with two separate occupants. And to have the county fire encroach onto another lot without permission puts the city of Brentwood into legal jeopardy, and that also has to be taken into consideration. And so I want to thank the Planning Commission. I know your scope is limited. And all I ask is that the Planning Commission take into account the things that they can. And I really appreciate all of your professionalism and your time that you put in, because I know it's not easy. When I was a younger man, I did a lot of public service. And I wore a lot of hats, but as a result, most of my hair is gone. I used to have long hair, but you change one hat, the other one, and your hair falls out. So, bad joke, I know. So that's it for me. Thank you very much this evening.
Margaret.
Good evening. My name is Margaret. I am an English teacher at Liberty High School, and I have been teaching there for 25 years. So I have had many years to observe the traffic patterns. I really am disturbed by the desire to put a fire station anywhere near the Liberty campus, even if it's over on the same street as the Veterans Hall. Liberty is planning to expand. We are currently at about 3,000 students. The plan is to go up to 6,000 students. The Liberty Union High School District no longer owns the land that they were planning to build High School Number Four. The plan is that all of those students who would have gone to High School Number Four will now be incorporated into Liberty. They will be taking down every building, and every building will become a two-story building. This has already begun. If you go past Second Street, you'll see the B building is two stories. I'm convinced that Liberty has no choice in this matter because our superintendent came in person to all three sites twice to reiterate that this is not an optional plan. This is going to happen regardless of all the complaints from all the Liberty teachers. This is going to happen. My concern is that the traffic around Liberty is already a nightmare. If there happens to be a fire anytime between 7:30 and 8:30, those fire trucks will be unable to move. They will not be able to go anywhere. There are too many parents dropping off their students for school. I've also seen problems with parents disobeying traffic laws, parking in handicap spaces just to drop their students off. So I'm certain there will be parents blocking the fire lanes when a fire truck needs to come by. So I really urge you to consider this information. It is not going to change. Liberty is going to become a 6,000-student school. If that has changed, they have not informed anyone at Liberty. So I'm just a shudder and terror at the traffic nightmare that's going to exist. The number of students who are at risk now is crazy. If you build a fire station, the number of students at risk will increase. The number of people's homes who are burning down will be at risk because the fire trucks will be unable to leave the fire station. There will be too much traffic, too many parents, too many students. I don't see it happening. So that's my concern, and that's what I know about what's happening at Liberty. Thank you.
Travis Martin.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you. I always start with a thank you, because I know your jobs are not easy. I know it requires a great deal of personal sacrifice and effort on your part beyond what you are compensated or given as time in order to engage the questions that are brought before you, not just the fire station. But as I've been attending these meetings, it is a much bigger job than just my issues. But speaking of my issues, they are those of the veterans. They are those of the community and the downtown area. It was brought up a few minutes ago. We just found out as well that in spite of the Planning Commission's insistence and homework sent back to the city to be sent back to the fire district to answer what are very reasonable questions regarding this fire station. And we're not, I don't even think we're actually asking, I say not we, but that there was not an actual ask for an entire CEQA, but some specific points of interest and contention that needed to be addressed. And the reply thus far seems to be, we will not do it, and your request is not of our concern. That's a pushback I'm not sure that the city Planning Commission, or quite frankly, the city engineers, should allow to stand or embrace as a go-forward plan. We've brought to you both the fiduciary reasons on the back end of why we are so hardline about this and why we, as a community, have issues regarding the location of the firehouse. But we've also, at the same time, when you find a problem, find a solution. We've brought forth solutions that have thusly been ignored at the Sand Creek location. Now, I don't sit on the inside of any of these, and I try my best to be as communicative as possible with those who are. But my interest comes with, why are we not figuring out how to, and this is maybe to the city, but this is a question that the Board needs to probably bring out as well. Why is the city not figuring out how we can, and I'll use the term expedite, I don't know what the proper term is, but best leverage our resources to put this firehouse or to make available the alternative location at 355 Sand Creek Road so that we can have a viable, useful firehouse that can both serve the downtown area and the greater area outside of the immediate downtown as the city expands north and west along the Sand Creek corridor. And apparently now, with the addition of the expansion, the pending expansion on the Liberty High School campus, the problems just seem to mount. The deck is stacked against the firehouse. While it seems like a good idea to be close, to be available, it is the wrong idea because of every other reason of why it is close. We have a long history at this facility, at the Brentwood Veterans Memorial Building. We are up against or about to celebrate our 100th year anniversary. It is a historical building, whether it is a historical identified monument or not officially. But to Brentwood, it is where quinceañeras, it is where marriages, it is where birthday parties and final memorials for both veterans and community members have been performed. There is a standing of decorum at every one of those events that I just listed that are impacted by having this enormous firehouse next door. I know that some of these issues that we bring up are not within your purview of responsibility, but they are ancillary to the question. But well within your purview comes the planning. But well within your purview comes the planning and how it affects the downtown corridor according to the plans. And some incredible work was done by Commissioners in order to identify the issues related to that beyond our known issues because of your prowess, capability, and understanding of all of the building codes and the downtown general plan. So thank you again for all of your effort, and we look forward to whatever it is that we can provide to you in the future. Now I got to go file my tax extension. Good night.
Mike Miyakovich?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for what you guys did at the last meeting, holding them accountable for studies that need to be done. If they do not answer your questions, your authority is like water. It means that anybody can come in here and do anything they want. Any builder, any county official can push any agenda they want, and it would get passed through. I please, 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 urge you to hold them accountable. I know the Sand Creek location is probably the best location for this fire station. It definitely, they can get down, I've tried it before. I made it in downtown from that location in less than two minutes, coming down Garen Parkway to City Hall. So the response time for downtown is under three minutes. Especially with all the traffic and the increase in students that are coming. I mean, it has already, just in the last four, five years, they've had over 1,000-some more students, just in the last year, last four years, five years, attend Liberty Union. And there's also, you also have the Independent High. You have the, was it Garen Park School? There's the Continuation School. There's a lot of, a lot of foot traffic down here and a lot of vehicle traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons. And I feel that it's just, if that fire station goes there, it is going to cause total chaos in this city. So I ask you, please do the right thing. Thank you.
At this time, we have no other speaker cards for those here in the chambers.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. We're going to move along into the consent calendar. Our next item is the consent calendar. There is one set of minutes for the regular meeting of April 1st, 2025. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we can get that abstention on mic, please.
Abstain.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into item E1, which is an application for a conditional use permit to allow for a Pilates studio known as IMX Pilates to occupy and operate within an 1,824-square-foot tenant space located at 3870 Balfour Road. Sweetie, Sarah?
Hi, good evening, chairperson, floor, commission. I'll just wait just a second and wait for my PowerPoint. All right, before you tonight is a conditional use permit, CUP 25-005, to allow for a 1,824-square-foot Pilates studio known as IMX Pilates to be located at 3870 Balfour Road. The proposed Pilates studio would be located within the City Block Commercial Center. The center consists of three buildings, with the third and newest building located along the front of the center adjacent to Balfour Road. The building is nearing construction completion, and the process of finding tenants is underway. The project site has a general plan designation of general commercial, which allows for a variety of mixed commercial uses, service-type business uses that are specific to certain areas of the city and neighbors that are closely located near arterial intersections. The proposed use is consistent with the various goals and policies of the general plan, which are explained more in the staff report. The site is zoned Plan Development 69, which is intended for, to provide for general commercial uses, retail uses, office uses, and service uses in conformance with the city's general plan. A Pilates studio would be considered recreational exercise facility, which would require a conditional use permit in this zoning district. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with a break in the afternoon and resuming evening classes beginning at 4:30 p.m. and ending at 7:30. Hours of operation for Saturdays and Sundays are proposed from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The tenant space would consist of a studio to house approximately 12 Pilates reformer machines, which are used to perform the workout. One reformer machine is needed per person in the class, and therefore, the number of participants would be limited by the number of machines. Classes are typically one hour long. Given that the project, given the information in the staff report and that the project is consistent with the general plan and CEQA exemption, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 25-007, approving conditional use permit number 25-005. I do want to make one clarification. The hours of operation in the resolution that was published for you, say till noon on Saturdays and Sundays, that was a clerical error. The applicant has requested till 1:00, and that was in their written description. So I've modified the final resolution to clarify 1:00 p.m. for Saturdays and Sundays. I'm available for any questions, as is the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Not at this time.
None for me, thank you.
None here, thank you.
And none for me. Thank you so much. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant, who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. The city has received zero public comments regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments would be made available on the city's website, on the meeting information page, if we had any. April?
At this time, we have no public speaker cards for those here in person. Oh, one second, we do have one. And we do not have anyone in Zoom at this time. Denise Cosgrove?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Denise Cosgrove. I am a director with the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, and we are always encouraging and excited to have new businesses open up here in Brentwood. So I encourage you to go ahead and approve this conditional permit for the Pilates class or Pilates organization, which I think would be a great benefit to Brentwood and a new business for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have no other speaker cards and no one in Zoom.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Is there any discussion by the commission? Anybody?
I'll start. I think the only thing to call out specifically here is that the instance of recreational exercise class facilities is called out as far as a conditional use permit for PD 69. It seems fair, that appropriate, that a conditional use permit is required for a company like this. And I like the plans. I think, I think from my perspective, including motorcycles, it's relatively straightforward from my point of view, so thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's a great addition to the city of Brentwood. This is something that we need more of. And so I'm all for it. It was done very well. The presentation was done well. The packet was complete. And so to that end, I think that it aligns well with some of the things that we are engaging for the city of Brentwood.
I want to echo everything my fellow Commissioners have said. I think this is a great ad, and like was said before, we're always encouraging new businesses, and this is another great one that I think could come through. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with everything that was said here. I think this is a great addition to the center and to Brentwood. And I have no more comments with that. Entertain a motion?
Second?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-007, approving conditional use permit Number 25-005, subject to certain findings and conditions.
All second?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it. Congratulations. Welcome to Brentwood. We're going to move on to item E2. It's an application for a conditional use permit to allow for an art workshop and entertainment studio, offering art classes as well as a space to host private art class events within a 1,482-square-foot tenant space located at 1185 Second Street, Suite F. Sarah?
Good evening again. As just mentioned before you tonight is a conditional use permit, CUP 24, excuse me, 25-004, to allow for a 1,482-square-foot art workshop and entertainment studio, offering art classes as well as a space to host private art class events. This is located again at 1185 Second Street, Suite F. The Wonder Workshop is an art studio, is proposed within the Town Center Plaza Shopping Center in the building along the northern side of the center adjacent to Central Boulevard. The property site has a general plan designation of general commercial, which allows for a variety of mixed uses and service-type businesses that again, serve specific areas of the city and neighborhoods that are closely located near arterial intersections. This proposed use is consistent with the various goals and policies of the city's general plan, which are explained as well in detail in the staff report. The site is zoned Plan Development 10, Subarea A, which is intended for the development of approximately 130,000 square feet of a commercial center to serve the everyday shopping needs for the community, including service uses, and are typically provided for within the neighborhood or community shopping center. An art studio or instructional use is a use that is not specifically listed as being either permitted or conditionally permitted. However, a use that is not listed may be considered as a conditional use permit. The Wonder Workshop proposes to operate an entertainment center offering art classes for individuals of all ages and all skill levels, with an option to host private events such as birthday parties, corporate team building, or other special events. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 8:45 a.m. to 5:15 p.m., with classes that are typically an hour long. The applicant anticipates approximately three to five classes per day, with a maximum of 15 students at a time. Birthday parties and events would be approximately three hours in duration and have a maximum capacity of 25 people. This project, as mentioned, is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning as well as the CEQA exemptions. Staff recommends at this point that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 25-008, approving the conditional use permit, CUP 25-004, as conditioned. Thank you. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you, Sarah. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff? Chair Roberts?
Not at this time.
Jones?
None at this time, thank you.
Vice Chair, okay. We have no discussion. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant, who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the commission? Thank you. The city has received zero public comments regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. April?
At this time, we have no speaker cards for those in person on this item, and we have no one in Zoom.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. And is there any discussion by the commission? I'll go down the line. Commissioner Roberts, any discussion?
No, I, you know, I was looking at parking, but I'm familiar with that neighborhood, actually, that center. And I think that there's more than enough parking, so I don't think that that's going to be an issue. So no, not at this time. I don't have any discussion on this other than I think that this is yet another good opportunity for the city of Brentwood to engage in the arts. So I'm fine with it. I think it's fantastic. I wish we had more of that coming our way, but it's just my opinion.
Commissioner Jones?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with what you said. You know, I too was thinking about the parking for a minute. I know in the staff report, it showed 623 parking spots, 70 for the studio. We had a deficiency of six, but I've been to that shopping center multiple times. I don't think that's an issue and don't have a problem with it. I do think too, this is a great ad, just to the character, you know, of the shopping center and to the neighborhood. You know, so I don't foresee any issues with this. So thank you.
Vice Chair Brand?
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what's been said, seems to be a lot of it tonight. Especially, I'd like to thank the applicant, because as a parent of very young children, it's nice to know that there are other opportunities that are indoor activities. So when the older kids go off to school, that there's a, you know, that 8:45 time is a great opportunity to go take them and do other fun things. It's nice to see that, you know, type of business is beginning to expand in our city. We can definitely use it. I think, you know, Sarah's comment about, you know, it's not specifically listed within the CUP requirements, but it's not a, you know, specific permitted use. It's understandable that, you know, for safety's sake, we submit for a CUP, so that's great. And then as far as the parking is concerned, yeah, I strongly echo what's been said here before. You know, I think the off-hours between the Mountain Mikes is there. There's some, you know, cosmetology-type businesses, as well as the coffee house there, so, and the Safeway. I don't suspect that that'll be a majorly impacted type parking lot. So, yeah, seems fair to me. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, once again echoing everything that everybody said. I did want to note too that the packet tonight for this application is very clean and very well put together. I do, don't have any comments on it. Since parking was brought up, I'll note for the public that technically that we're six spaces short in that shopping center, which if you're familiar with it, is probably not going to be a problem. Six spaces is not much over there. But that's more than mitigated by the fact that they're going to be coming and going at different hours than the uses over in that area with the restaurants. So anyway, with that, I make... Oh, I need... So, anyway, with that, I, I make, oh, I need, huh? No, no, no.
Thank you. No, I just, Commissioner Brand, you brought up a, a great piece about, you know, just particularly for children, and I know the applicant, and when I was reading it, they had talked about how this is a really neat thing, you know, from an extracurricular option for homeschool students, you know, to explore art, science concepts anonymously. I just, I love that. I think that's really neat, and I know we have a homeschool population, you know, within the city of Brentwood, so I think, I mean, anything that just provides productive options for children, you know, and adults, I think it's just a wonderful thing. So I just, I wanted to comment on that because I thought that was, I think that's a neat thing particularly for that neighborhood as well, so, thanks.
That's an excellent point. With that, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, and yeah, to echo that, I, I think the homeschool community is substantially large in Brentwood, and I think it often gets ignored. And so, you know, having sort of private options like this in which, you know, the sort of collective homeschool community can combine themselves into some type of educational environment, whether it be anything STEM or art, or STEAM, I guess they call it now. It's fantastic, so, yeah, just wanted to add that.
All right. Commissioner Roberts? You good? Okay. Thank you for all of that. Those are all very good points. Let's, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 25-008 approving conditional use permit number 25-004 subject to certain findings and conditions. All second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. All righty. Now we'll move into business item F1. This is an application for a design review to construct a new 10,006, I guess I should probably read these, design review, DR 24-010 to construct a new 10,641 square foot two-story industrial building containing three suites with office and warehousing space on a 0.62 acre particle parcel located at 131 Technology Way, and that's APN 016-410-001. And Miguel?
Thank you, Chair, and good evening to the planning commissioners, and good evening to the members of the public. Miguel Concha, City of Brentwood Planning Division, here to present DR 24-010, which is an industrial flex building located at 131 Technology Way. The parcel has a general plan land use designation of business park, and it has a zoning designation of Plan Development 42, specifically SubArea F, which is intended for business parks. The specific request is for a new two-story, 10,641 square foot flex building which would have three suites which include an office, oh, which include office and warehouse spaces. The building would also have three roll-up doors and associated site improvements for the site are trash enclosure, parking area, and lighting landscaping. Access onto the site would be, can be taken from Technology Way and Business Center Drive. The parking proposed is 25 parking spaces, 22 parking spaces were required per the ratios, so there's an excess of three parking spaces, including one accessible space. The applicant is also proposing 6,488 square feet of landscaping. The building would incorporate vertical and horizontal offsets, metal canopies at the front of the building, and wall caps and cornices on three sides. The north elevation lacks a little bit of architectural features that the other three elevations have, but this elevation would be facing the neighboring storage, self-storage facility, so it's essentially, public can't really see it. The project is consistent with the general plan land use designation of business park. It's also consistent with PD 42, specifically SubArea F, and the project does qualify as a Class 32 categorical exemption under CEQA for infill development projects. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 25-006 approving design review 24, 24-010, subject to certain findings and conditions, and that would conclude my presentation.
All right, thank you, Miguel. Does the planning commission have any clarifying questions for staff? I'll start with Commissioner Roberts.
Can we please ask you to turn your mic on?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes. And I'm just wondering, this is for industrial, Miguel, is this for industrial use only?
It's light industrial warehousing typically is light industrial, and the office component would be office uses, which is allowed in this area.
Yes, I, I believe it is, but do we know what's going in there? What business is going in there?
No, since it's a flex space, each of the three suites will be rented out, and there would be, the tenants would be businesses that require office and warehouse in space.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, just, I noticed there, we talked about there were, I think there were four electric vehicle spaces within that lot. Is that consistent with other parking lots related to the formula for how they calculate the number of parking spaces?
The electric vehicle parking spaces is governed by the building code, and so when they apply for building permits, it's going to be at the, the state regulated ratio.
Great, okay, thank you. And then another piece around, just in the report, it was, talked about a bio-retention basis for stormwater runoff, and then it said a draft condition of approval is recommended by the Parks and Recreation Department. Can you, can you speak more on that?
Do you have a specific condition?
It was, bear with me. I had it up. Let me find it, I'll, will keep moving forward, but we can come back to it during discussion if we need to. I was just curious where it talked about Parks and Rec being involved in it, and I was just wondering what that meant.
So Parks and Rec is typically involved with, are the landscaping portions of, so they typically have conditions as well. The landscaping application will come in at a later time, and I believe the Parks Committee is the one that approves that.
Excellent. You answered my question. Thank you. That's all I have.
Vice chair?
No questions. Thank you.
Excellent. And I have no questions for staff. Thank you so much. At this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person except for the applicant who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
My name is Ante Zovich. One of the applicants just wanted to say hello, and I'm a local Brentwood resident, and we did a project out here a few years ago down the street, and hopefully looking forward to doing another, another one out here in Brentwood. I have our architect with here. If you have any questions, I could bring him up.
I'll, I'll check with the commission, Commissioner Roberts. I can't, I can't, I keep saying, why don't you say Chair Roberts? Commissioner Roberts?
You know, so I know that you don't have anyone identified at this time. I know that space because across the street from there is quite a few apartments, and there's a school right behind this location. And not a concern, but I'm inquisitive because with the school in that space and apartments, quite a few of them across the street, I'm wondering if this, if there's going to be, and I guess it'll come before us, noise, and we, we don't know who's renting, but we do know that there, there are three, there are three doors that will be, and they're quite large, so I would imagine there's going to be some kind of work going on in any one of these bays, and you have no idea who it is that you might be considering leasing or renting that space. So I guess the, I'm just putting it on the record that I am a little concerned with the school being there and, and apartments across the way, just for the record.
Understood.
Commissioner Jones?
I, I echo what you're saying, Commissioner Roberts, and I guess, do you have any, this is for the applicant, do you have any inclination of, you know, that who would be coming into those, or is that just still too early to be determined?
At this time, I would say it's too early, but it would definitely be of permitted uses. We wouldn't anticipate anything out of that realm.
Sure, understood. Okay, thank you.
Vice chair Brand?
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I think, you know, if you go through PD 42, all the permitted uses are very consistent with very quiet operations. It's mostly business, commercial, like, it's not heavy machinery or something like that. So it's pretty straightforward, as, as the applicant has described, and even some of, you know, I would say most of the conditional use permits as well for SubArea F are, yeah, relatively calm as well. So I think, I think there's a, there's a decent framework already in place, and that, you know, a, a building like this could support some really congruent businesses for the region.
And I have no questions. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the planning commission. My name is Don Sterling of Sterling Architects. Just want to say thanks to Miguel for all his help on this project. It's actually made it a lot better. And the, and the reason I wanted to step up here and tell you is that we met with the neighbors, they're okay with the design. We also are in agreement with the conditions of approval, so there's no issues there. So I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
I think Ricardo wanted to say some public comment.
No, we're, we're asking questions of the applicant. We'll get to public.
Through the chair, are we going to, or continuing public comment? Correct.
Oh.
No.
So we were asking questions, the applicant, we, should we do public comment and then go back to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, but, but they do still have a, a speech to make. Oh, all right.
You want to hear from the applicant?
Let me read in the public comment and then...
Well, you've already opened it. I just want to make sure because Mr. Ricardo will have five minutes unless he's speaking under the applicant's time.
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person except for the applicant. Oh, we already did that?
Yes, you already said that, so we can just go to the public speakers, which will start with Ricardo.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Ricardo Noguera, Economic Development Manager with the city. And I would say, this is the first industrial building in the city, new construction, in almost five years. In almost five years. So I'm very excited. Our, our vacancy rates for industrial in the three business parks we have are less than 5%. There's virtually no space other than a couple of, of units at the Sunset Industrial Park, nothing available at Harvest Commerce Center, and very few spaces available at the Sand Creek Business Park. This development could not come any sooner. And in fact, just on the other side of that school that you mentioned, Zovich developed a 21,000 square foot building on Technology Way. There have been no issues with noise, or, or traffic, or other complaints. It's fully leased. It's been fully leased. I've been here now three and a half years. It's been leased the whole time. I cannot find space for industrial users in this city, and I am turning away businesses because construction costs are so high across the Bay Area. So when this development comes forward, I was excited. And I'm working on a few others that I hope to bring before you, that we hope to bring before you in the next few months. It couldn't come any sooner. And there were concerns raised about land use compatibility. I have the same challenges in the Innovation Center. If you look at the west side of the, the Innovation Center, Hydro and Ranch Road, you have single-family homes across the street. I take you to the east side, Jeffrey Way, you have blossoms at Brentwood, you have churches. We are going to have challenges in terms of attracting development to Brentwood, and we're going to have to, I hate the word variance and CUP, but we're going to have to find a way for these uses to work together. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Denise Clausgrove.
As an advocate to bringing businesses here to Brentwood, very excited about this project with its light industrial use. We don't have much of that in here in Brentwood. So in talking to businesses and trying to convince them to come to Brentwood so that this city's economic power can grow, resources and reserves and revenue can grow, very, very excited about this project and what it could mean to bringing a different kind of business instead of just offices to Brentwood. And I think that mixed use is exciting for everybody here in Brentwood. So I encourage the commission to streamline the process and get this approved as quickly as possible so that we have choices when we talk to businesses and talk about them coming to Brentwood. Thank you.
At this time, we have no other speakers here in person. We're going to go to Zoom. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. We have no additional speakers.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Oh, I forgot to mention the city did receive zero public comments regarding this item that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Had we, they would have been made available on the city's website on the meeting information And we don't need a motion to close this, so we can just move right on into discussion.
Through the chair, you will need to close public comment, please.
Oh, I, I do need to close it, I'm sorry. I will not close public comment, but we don't need a motion. All right. And Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, okay, good. So yeah, I think it's, it's, I know exactly where this is going to be located, and I know exactly where this is going to be located, and in keeping with the, the landscape, which to me is important, I see that there have been some selections made here with shrubs and trees. It's kind of flat and industrial, so I appreciate, I appreciate whatever will be placed at this site in terms of greenery and/or some kind of ground cover. And I see the selections. We've talked about these types of plants in the past and how important it is for them to, you know, survive. I would imagine that, that has all been worked out. There's quite a few here in the packet, and, but I would, would recommend that we don't use non-living ground cover. That's just my suggestion. It's such a beautiful space over there, and it could use some color. So that's my only ask, is that the ground cover not be stones or birch. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ro, uh, Jones?
Yeah, thank you. So just, great job to staff on this, is in terms of providing the information, you know, I think I, it really gave me everything I needed in respect to this particular agenda item. And, look, I, I like the design, I think it's consistent with, you know, the rest of the area. I was going a little back and forth because I know there was, there was a mention in the, in the report about fencing, but, I mean, I think I could be persuaded either way if it's, if it's, you know, whether it's necessary or not, but the design is good, it makes sense, it aligns with the rest of the area. I think we got on the record just the piece for the noise, but I, I think we're, I think we're good there, and I appreciate the comment about just the variance and, you know, being, being mindful of, of just some of the things that we need to do to work together. So I like it, and I, I don't really have anything else. Thank you.
And Vice chair Brand?
Yeah, I was just thinking about...
Yeah, I was just thinking about the comment about industry. Didn't we have an item about Harvest Park? Wasn't the newer Harvest Park building, was that, that's light industrial? Was that light commercial? It is, okay. That just, it just reminded me of that. That's, yeah, the design here is pretty great. I mean, it's, you know, it's, I love the use of the trees, particularly on the perimeter. It certainly brightens that corridor through there. I think the fact that the trash receptacle is obscured, that's great. You know, it's up against the storage facility. As a whole, in looking at the actual exterior designs, it reminds me a lot of the, what do you call it, the medical center that's kind of across the street from the firehouse over on Balfour. So it's, it, the sort of external look to it is very consistent with what I would consider to be acceptable within Brentwood. So, very great there, as well as all of the roof, what do you call those things, the, yeah, are obscured by the upper part. So that's, we kind of give applicants a hard time on that, and so I think it's nice to see that that's all taken care of. Very excited to see potentially what type of businesses can go in here, especially with the big roll-up door. Lots of possibilities. In checking out PD 42, I think there's a lot of variety and capability for, you know, businesses to fill that. You know, as Ricardo describes, you know, that if we have a 5% vacancy rate, I mean, that's, that's pretty good. And so, trying to fill spaces faster than, than we can make them. So, other than that, I think I'm very, very pleased with this project, and, yeah, happy to give the floor.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, going, in going through this design review, I didn't really see any red flags. It looks great to me. It looks appropriate for the area. It fits in with how we want things to look over there. It's very nicely done, and I really do appreciate it. I do also note, I would echo what Ricardo had said before, that these kinds of uses inside of a city, and I know this going way back, you know, you'll kind of drive around and you'll see these, you'll see buildings that you don't know all the time what they're for, but they're smaller buildings, industrial buildings. They have little shops and stuff in them, and those things are very powerful drivers of your economy. They, they help a lot, so they're, they're beneficial in a lot of ways. But that's getting a little off-topic for a design review, but I do, I do think that it's a welcome kind of business to have here. I think the design review, it looks really, really well done. And again, tonight, we've had a great presentation from staff. And so I think that's really all I have, want to say about this. Does anybody have more discussion, or should we go to a motion? All right, I'll entertain it. Do you want to discuss, or do you have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 25-010, approving DR 24-010, subject to certain findings and conditions. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we'll move into the informational reports from committees and upcoming meeting schedule. Transplant Committee, Vice Chair Brand?
Oh, the April 10th meeting was canceled, so nothing to report.
Design Review Committee, Commissioner Jones?
We've not had one, so nothing to report.
Land Use and Development Committee, there's going to be one, I think, next Monday or the Monday after, the 21st, and I'll report back at that time. And the Brentwood Municipal Code Review Committee?
Still working on scheduling that. Not sure, not sure when we're going to do it.
All right, perfect. And we'll move into the request for future agenda items. Do we have any new requests at this time?
Question. Prior to Commissioner Spaulings' departure, there were a few items that were brought to the planning department's attention that were items that he had brought to, to your, to future agenda items. And I'm wondering, do we have to restate that, or is that something that is still going to come forward?
As far as I know, you would not need to restate that. I can go ahead and, once I get back to the office and take a look at the list, and we can provide you an update on the status of where we are with those.
I appreciate it.
But, yeah, you should not have to reiterate them. They should have still stayed on the books.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones, do you have a future agenda?
I have none, thank you.
Vice Chair Brand?
The only thing I wanted to bring up was, I think, I've looked at the way that some of the other commissions have brought up informational reports, and they're much more broad as far as the way that informational reports, so ours are very structured based off of other committees and such. I would like to bring forward the possibility that we have a bit more of a open-ended informational report. So I know, like myself, I'm very, I participate quite a bit in the community, and I use that as a way of influencing my decisions on the dais. And so I think it's fair that at least the public knows where I've been, what I've been doing, so that, you know, they'll have a perspective on that. So I know Arts does that. I know Parks does that. Not sure, I don't remember if Youth Commission does that, but, yeah, and obviously City Council does, but just a, just a thought.
All right, staff has that. Okay. All right, and I have none. So the next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for May 6, 2025, at 7:00 PM, and will be held here at the council chambers located at 150 City Parkway. And with that, I need one final motion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.